The Lake County, I call this meeting of the Lake County E nine one one authority to order at ten hundred hours on four, four, twenty, twenty-five. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of approving today's agenda. Alright.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Hope a comment? Well, move on to director report, start off with, just to continue the conversation a little bit from our last meeting about the permitting process, joint meeting with the joint county, city committee about the race series permitting processes and kind of taking that as, it's an attention item for everybody in both county, city, and all the different entities involved with approving the permit. So I think that's just going to continue to be a project for this year that I'd like to make sure that the board stays informed of and has a voice in, which I think we all will organically because of our positions, so. I guess one thing with that that I didn't really pull from the meeting was are they reapplying for those permits? Has anybody done? We saw them come across.
Not for the one hundreds though.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
So I think Silver Rush and Marathon and Camps came through, but I don't think either of the one hundred permits came through.
Thanks, that's all I have. Dan?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Claire?
Um, I do not have anything.
Dan?
Nope, nothing.
Awesome. Alright, I'll move on to new business and discussion. The first item, item A is discussion, update on the E nine one director hiring process. So, so far, we've received four applications. First one was on February twentieth. And so I just wanted to do a quick review on all those, Jeremiah and I being here, I've only emailed them to Chief and Jeremiah to review those applications, so just a quick touch, we can ask, we can open that up if you guys want to look further into those positions. But the first one, it applied in February, in the February contact with him is the Jazz HR system sends it an automatic auto reply to them saying we received it, you know, expect, you know, to be contacted for next steps. I think it exactly, I wrote it down here. So what they received is thank you for your interest in employment with Lake County government, we will review your application. What's that?
We skipped Paula.
I'm sorry, Paula.
We'll circle back after.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I know we, when we hit our final item where we update everything, I see you as having a touch point in everything. But was there anything that we're not going to touch on during that that I missed out?
No.
Okay. Sorry, sorry for that. You just throw something at me next time.
Honestly, I'm sorry Paula, I was like, wait, that's one a lot quicker than I thought it should.
Yeah.
And I was like, wait, because we skipped Paula.
Yeah, alright. Yeah, my apologies.
Throw a jelly bean at you.
Yeah, I was prepared for it. Weapons. But yeah, back to that first applicant, with that auto email, again, it's just saying thanks for your interest. That will go, her application will be reviewed and we'll reach out about next steps. And that, so that first applicant is somebody that I think a few of us may know. She works for the applicants of Lake County. She has a bunch of leadership director experience. However, no related first responder experience. Do you know, did you or Jeremiah contact her?
No.
Okay. So I was hoping for Jeremiah to be here today because he was supposed to contact one of them. Do you know if any of them have been contacted?
That I don't know.
Okay. The reason why I want to bring that up is with the other positions that Paula, Chief and Jeremiah have all been a part of, that Paula's led the, like, the organization of contacting them. And then what we found with that first applicant that applied in February that I think almost two, three weeks went by and, and there was no, there was no review of the application, or view of the resume, or contact made. And then that's when I noticed that, well, that kind of was on, on me being the one able to see it, or can you see it also?
I can see it, but I'm not getting the automated answer unless I remember to check Jazz HR.
Yeah, so immediately we had like this break in communication fail point with trying to hire the director. And we're putting it upon ourselves to make sure that we have this process as thorough. So anyways, that's why I wanted to make sure there's no contact. So the second applicant we received was in March, March thirteenth. Again, auto email went out, sounded like there's no other contact. Again, this one's kind of similar where there's leadership experience, owning a business and having director responsibilities. But again, no related experience, no dispatching experience, no first responder experience. And then the third one, again, in March, later in March, same auto email was sent out, sounds like no contact with, with him after that. In a recent college graduate and just has some experience with working with the board, but just specific finances. And so there was some reporting to the board, but other than that, no experience. Again. And then recently, last Friday, we received a fourth application. The initial contact was made through the auto email. And then this one now, I think, did you get a chance to redo that?
Oh, yeah.
So this one checks, I would say, a lot of our boxes, if not all of them. And so, there was that one. I think, so that one, because had some related experience, we're more interested in that position was Jeremiah said that he'd reach out to him. And has anybody heard from Jeremiah, if he has or not?
No. Nope, I got the guy's resume right here.
Yeah.
He said, um, oh, he is going to head up to the meeting, he's planning on contacting the applicant today.
Okay, okay. So that's good. So what I wanted to go through today was just kind of touch on those. You know, we still have the KRW option to use, which I think now that we're working through this, we can see some of the benefit because we pay them to do all the things we're trying to do essentially. They have a little more focused effort on all the things with this, maybe for reach is part of, part of that. So that's something that I want to keep that discussion going, and maybe even talk today a little bit about when, when do we want to maybe go to that? Is if we don't put a timeframe to it, do we want to try this fourth applicant, see if we think comes of that? Try our hands in this whole hiring process for director role position, just with us. And if that fails, then we're back to talking about potentially working with KRW because we are approaching that timeline where they would rather work for, with us. And so the timing of it might work out. Any thoughts on, on that?
I'm saying, set up an interview with the fourth candidate, this Mr. Barney, and we get a feel for him. And if we don't think he's a good fit, then we move on to KRW.
I second that for sure, yeah. I listened to the podcast, very interesting. It was a great discussion, very sound minded. I, I, I really think that we'd be in that set. Now, of course, we have our challenges here, so how's it? So I think, yes, we need to put it up, you know, what his long-term goals are. What do you think?
I agree. Let's pursue this one, see where it lands. And after that, take a look at KRW. I just want to be cognizant of the summer coming up, I think all of our schedules are going to get stretched pretty thin. So I don't think us taking on the hiring process is just going to be feasible schedule-wise once we hit summer. So I think kind of bringing in KRW, letting them do the recruiting, and then we're doing more interviewing.
Okay.
Would be useful.
What do you think our timeframe would be to, to get this person in here to do that? Because that will give us somewhat of a timeline for it to get here then.
I mean, that sure would be nice if we could interview him in April. May first, might be a little aggressive, but, I mean, I was just thinking yesterday, it's going to get really nice next month. And we need to move quickly once the weather gets nice.
I mean, I will say, like, our next meeting is scheduled for May second.
I can't be there for that one, I think, so.
Um, I was going to say, I'm kind of learning from how the board handled the county manager interview process. We can't go into executive session to do an interview. So May second would be an option, but also just, I would see what his timeline is. Does he want to come out? Does he want to do virtual?
Yeah, I can be involved, you know, maybe first steps can be a phone interview, since he's from out of state. Can you continue to get a feel for each other and, and then request a, in person? I haven't seen, I'm sorry, I didn't see the application. Where's he from?
Florida.
Florida. And I believe he's living in, yeah, I think he's living in El Salvador, Mexico at this point, in that position. Yeah. He is from Florida, based in Brazil.
Yeah, might be nice to do a phone interview, and then if it works out, see if he wants to come up for the main meeting.
Yeah.
Or we can schedule a special meeting or something.
Right. Again, I'll be out thirtieth through the seventh, so I will not be there for that, but, yeah, everything that I've seen so far. Are you suggesting that, that part of the board meeting be the interview, like a public interview?
I mean, we can go into executive session, like.
To discuss it?
Or not to interview.
Oh, I thought you said you could, we couldn't do that.
No, we could, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. So then, I would say by May second, we probably have enough information to decide if we're, you know, if we need another month before we decide on KRW because the interview process is going well, maybe we hired by then, made a decision by then, or we do an interview, or it's not working out and we need to make a decision on KRW. So I think that May second meeting, we can make that, add it as a decision item on, on what we're, potentially a decision item.
Yeah. Yep.
And just to, to, to lay some responsibility on people who, we have Jeremiah contacting, you said he is coming today?
Yeah, he said he's going to head up into my neck.
Jeremiah's making that initial contact. Do, do you want to be just you and Jeremiah, Paula to a phone interview?
Yeah, the three of us for the initial interview. I think that works well.
Okay.
We've been clicking along good.
So, just put that on the three of you guys to organize all that.
Yeah.
And then provide the feedback to the group on how that's going. Alright, any other thoughts on director next steps? You guys want any more information on the other applicants?
You know, I looked at their resumes and nothing grabbed me, Andrew, yeah.
I would like to contact them, an official letter from us, or maybe it might be something on Jazz HR where we can just, if there's a denial letter, maybe?
There is.
There is, okay. Hey, how's it going? Perfect timing, we were just talking about. We're just, so we did a quick review on, yeah, before we move on to the next one, I'd be here now. For new, new business and discussion, we're talking about the director hiring process. And sounds we've got an update, you're contacting, was it Barney? Barney, Mr. Barney today. So what we decided for you, since you weren't here.
Congratulations.
Yeah. That you, Dan, and Paula would, would reach out, try to schedule an initial phone interview since he's out of state. Try to organize as quickly as he's willing to, to move. That we can get him here for a board interview on, during the next one, on May second. I think we maybe played the what-if game a little bit right now, what if he can't make it out on that precise day? Do we adjust the board meeting, or do we adjust our, our in-person interview process? What do you guys think?
We can always call a special meeting.
Okay.
So, sorry, the background is talking with Liz Miller, she was working on the county manager interviews for the board. So what their, what our commissioners did was went into executive session for matters of personnel, and that way they could interview candidates as a board.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So, contact him to find out if a phone interview, schedule a phone interview. Have the phone interview, then have the. Yeah, have the phone interview, and you can even, if you want to contact him after that, or at the end of it, or whatever, to try to schedule an interview next, probably after some discussion or whatever you guys decide on that, but just leaving that to you three to organize and run with. But we'll try to land it on that May second or a special meeting. I would, I'm, I think it'd be great because Dan was saying that he's out from the thirtieth through the seventh. And so maybe we can get that scheduled, you know, if he's willing to come out even sooner, we do a special meeting at the end of this month where Dan can be a part of that. All those are options. And then part of the discussion too is KRW, keeping them in mind, when do we want to make a decision on yea or nay? And I think we kind of landed on mainly just to see how this applicant goes before we decide, obviously, on KRW, so. Anything else I missed? Oh, get to Jeremiah. Jeremiah, any other thoughts on that topic? We, I guess one more thing too, is we talked about the other three applicants. If we're, if we're all not just wanting to pursue an interview with them at all, then we can send them a denial letter and just want to get on that. That was one thing that we brought up is not having Paula heavily involved in these initial steps of the, of the hiring process that we're dropping balls with communication with the other applicants. And so, we'll send those out to those other three applicants. And pursue John and then talk about next steps with KRW if we get to that point. Alright. Well, we'll move on to item B's proclamation of thanks to the Lake County Emergency Communications Center and recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunication Week twenty twenty-five, led by Claire.
Yeah, so this is just something that happens monthly, or yearly. It's a month to just be able to look at our dispatchers and say, hey, thank you, we recognize the work that you're doing. We know it's been a crazy year and a half since the board, almost two years since the board came on. So we appreciate everything that you've done to work through the transition with us. We know you guys do a hard job, behind the scenes work, and we just want to take this moment to really thank you all for everything that you're doing and really formally recognize your commitment, service, and sacrifice for us. So I have a printed copy, but.
Yeah, I think, come ahead with it.
Probably have to do a motion since it's formal, so.
Read it first, then a motion?
Uh, we motion and then any other discussion and.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation. I forgot to look up the wording for that, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, second.
I shouldn't have.
Any further discussion? No, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the proclamation, approving the proclamation. Alright.
Alright, now we read it?
Yeah.
Alright, this is a proclamation of thanks to the Lake County Emergency Communications Center and recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week twenty twenty-five. Whereas National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, excuse me.
It's okay, I gave you that.
Is annually recognized during the second week of April every year to honor public safety telecommunications for their commitment, service, and sacrifice. And whereas the NPSTW initially began in nineteen eighty-one by Patricia Anderson of the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Office in California and was formally recognized by President William Clinton through Presidential Proclamation six, 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 seven. And whereas the staff of the Lake County Emergency Communications Center worked tirelessly, twenty-four, seven, every day of the year to provide life-saving services to our community, visitors, and first responders. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas emergency responders rely on their knowledge and professionalism to make critical decisions, obtain information, and quickly dispatch needed aid. Public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas each telecommunications exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job assisting those in need. And whereas the Lake County E nine one one Board of Directors recognizes the dedication, skill, and effort our telecommunications put into their work to make Leadville, Lake County a safe and healthy community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County E nine one one Board of Directors of the State of Colorado hereby recognizes and celebrates National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week twenty twenty-five and offers our thanks, gratitude, and support to the dedicated staff of the Lake County Emergency Communications Center. Approved and adopted this fourth day of April twenty twenty-five.
Alright, thanks Paula.
Thank you.
Danielle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then there's some thank you notes for staff as well.
One moment, I'm taking a phone call.
She just heard her name, she didn't get to see that. She just heard her name and thought you were trying to. We'll read it again.
Is it okay to comment on that?
Actually, I was expecting a speech.
I just want to say, and told you, I appreciate all of your help and us working together. I think it's great that we can work together and I think it's been a good year. I've been here since March twenty-ninth, the dispatch center. It's been a year.
Happy anniversary also.
Happy anniversary. Been quite a year. I want to say to staff, each of them, Daniella, Mary, Martha, our new one Kate, they have stepped in. They have really wanted to set the foundation for the communications center. And I so appreciate that a lot because without their help and dedication, it would not be going the way that it is. We are moving forward on things, we are all collaborating with each other, we're communicating, and it's working well. And I just, with them, they're a very good team and I appreciate them all. And I appreciate them.
That's great, Paula. Thanks for sharing that. Well, we can, we'll get that recorded and then, little copies in personnel. Maybe, put it on, something on the wall for you guys or something, do something nice with it.
Would anybody like to go to the clerk's office and drop it off for recording?
Yeah, I thought you would. Uh, yeah, hearing done, yeah.
Does anyone want to go to the clerk's office?
I suppose it's been just me and secretary, it's probably not.
Go to Vera.
Cool, awesome. Well, yeah, genuine thank you, Paula.
I'm sorry.
A genuine thank you from one in my heart for keeping this going. I know you were, you weren't in dispatch at the time, but you were with.
Yeah, just one moment. Hello.
Hey.
Sorry.
Thank, well, we're expecting a speech from you.
Uh, I just want to say thank you for all the support, to everybody, you know. It's been tough, but we're working together to get this department better.
Yeah, thanks for all you do.
Thank you. That's, that's end of my speech.
That was, that was good. Yeah, made great progress, still it's a, a lot to go, but we'll keep, keep plugging away. Alright, anything else? Alright, we'll move on to item C, updates and discussion on current operations and topics. So we're going through our list here. Training first.
Okay. Uh, so I had an opportunity to take a knee course, CTO, it was great. It was down Colorado Springs, learned a lot, made some good connections down there with people that are also interested in being trainers for their dispatch centers, so it was from large scale to small scale. I obtained a lot of information from them, right out the gate, I was like, I know nothing. So, I'm here to learn from everybody, it was great, I enjoyed it, I learned a lot. And then, we came in and we met, we're, we're meeting, me, Daniella, and Mary are meeting every other Wednesday. So we met this Wednesday and it, so, and it's from sixteen hundred to seventeen hundred. So we're just kicking off the training program right now currently. We initially found out that we needed some serious consistency with the program itself. So that's where we're starting right now. We're going to have an operational book and we're going to have a training manual. Once we create those two manuals, then we will have an opportunity to look at that in a thirty thousand foot view, if you will, and be like, okay, well, we're missing this. So what we'll probably do is we'll probably get with every agency, once we create those and say, okay, under law enforcement, this is the section that we have currently right now, what's missing in here? And what would you like to see from our dispatch centers, our dispatch center to be trained in being able to assist you more so in the field, et cetera? And that, that's going to be blanket, of course, with all emergency services. So, we're going to work on that, and then once we create our manual, because currently right now, we have a good training program, it's pretty decent, we just want to recreate it in a way where we, one, are, have a bunch of buy-in, but also get rid of the stuff that really doesn't make sense, but add a bunch of stuff on the material that we're actually collecting from Summit County, Pueblo. We'll, we'll, we'll figure out what their actual training program is, and there's a lot of things from this course that we can bring in. The standards itself from, what's that?
APCO.
Yeah, APCO. So we're going to, we're, once we have that manual, then that's when the real work starts. We'll go through all of our phases, we'll figure out, okay, does phase one make really good sense? What can we add to it? What can we take out of it? And then once we have all of that, then we'll come up with a timeframe for each dispatcher to go through it and say, okay, here's some efficiencies, this is the, at the efficiency level. And then what does the testing out look like after the fact? In, in, you know, in our career, in the fire service, and I'm sure in other emergency services, it's always that testing out is what's really important, to be able to make sure that people are truly efficient on what they're doing. So we have to create that portion, and I think we'll be able to pull from, you know, things that are already out there for basically job performance requirements, if you will. So, that's kind of where we're at in the, in the training program itself. We're, we're ordering folders, we're, we're going to do some work initially. Daniella's been great on initially putting the operational folder together. And when I say operational folder, we're going to have like five, right? One at the ELC, there's going to be a few at the, you know, the stations within dispatch. There'll be a training one, and then one also for the supervisor, the director, and they're all near each other. And hopefully we'll go electronic on this as well, so it's not just paper copy, of course. But it, it's going to be kind of like, okay, if there's a wildland fire, boom, okay, wildland fire, damn. Here's my procedural things for a wildland fire, here's some quick reference guides to be able to say, okay, we as an agency will give a dispatch, for just for an instance. If we say, okay, we need a second alarm, second alarm will bring in, you know, Eagle River, Summit Fire EMS, Chaffey County, and these are the resources that we need for that neutral aid. And the numbers will be there, et cetera. So it'll be a quick reference sheet so that dispatch will have greater efficiency and also not be so overwhelmed. So that's our goal for the actual training program. And then every single person within dispatch, it'll be standardized for everybody. So there'd be serious consistency as we go through the training program. So, one of the things that we did talk about, and Paula, you may want to talk a little bit more about this because you know more than I do. When there is a trainee, we need somebody to have constant connection with that trainee and then also in addition have a. and then also in addition have a dispatcher on. So we have a, so there's two dispatchers and a trainee. And I don't know what the budget looks like on that, but I think that we should be able to, because we have not been able to hire yet quite all of our personnel, to bring in dispatchers, two dispatchers at the one time, and then one dispatcher can specifically work with a trainee to get them through the process. Is, did I, did I, did I say that right?
I would like to say that, yes.
Yeah, this is Paula's idea and I, and I agree with it.
Just because when you're dispatching into primary dispatcher, it's hard to be that trainer also because you're dealing with that call and that dispatcher is just like, oh, I, I don't know what I'm doing. Like they're lost in all of that because of the time that it takes to get those calls and while you're dispatching. And I, I found out that out while I'm trying to train. I'm like, I can't be throwing out, do this, do that, you know, and they're just looking at me like, I don't, I don't know what I'm doing. And that's what I noticed, so I would, to me it made more sense, I have a primary dispatcher and then I have a CTO and a trainee. That would be, be ideal, so that they fully get what is happening and seeing everything in real time.
Yeah, so that, so that's a question, I think, for the board, do we just allow uh Paula to do that? Based on budgetary situations, if it's in the budget?
Not yet, right, not, not yet.
Not, not yet. Once we get some other people onboard, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get some good staff, that's hard.
Yeah, that's just a scheduling thing. Yeah.
And I would still like even.
So we can work with Paula and schedule things. Okay, so we'll work with the sheriff and I on, on, when we get there, I know that we're not there yet. And uh with that, once we do get a, uh, and this is probably the final thing. Once we do get some staff up and trained on our current situation right now, I would like to be able to send people to do ride alongs in other dispatch centers that have our mobile or flex. Just to be able to observe and learn everything they possibly can from, from another agency. So that will be a schedule that we'll create um based on our staffing levels when we get there for additional training. Then to say anything?
Um, no, just a work in progress and I'm excited. Everyone's excited. And even after we do get through this and even my thought is after that our new hires that have come on, that we are able to sit with them still and still go over calls and still do QA QI with them and be able to progress them further, just not the bare minimum of what we require, but to further that. That is my goal that I see.
Yeah, EMD will come, but we're, we're, we're building the foundation right now, making sure there's some cracks in it, so.
I'm excited.
Yeah, me too. It's actually, it's pretty fun.
It is. A lot of work.
But it'll take time, so that's, I, I can't stress that enough, it'll take some time. So. Anything else on the training front, Paula?
I think I have a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Um, question about the course, uh, did they go, oh, did they provide um some formats to use, like a scoring system? Uh, curious if they go over like an adult learning methods, is that what I saw you discuss? Yeah, yeah, oh, cool, yeah, yeah. Is that the same course you went through?
Um, I went through the supervisor course. And that was more of a leadership type, but it's still touched on that. Also on how people learn, what you need to find, how to communicate with them and stuff like that, so they get everything. You know, that they can get out of conversations and stuff, so pretty much almost the same, but different.
Sounds good. Move on to uh staff recruitment and retention. Jeremiah, Dan, what you guys got, anything on that front?
Paula.
Yeah, with the director stuff?
I just got a um denial back, the offer. She couldn't accept the offer, Hunter, cannot accept the offer at this time. She has a lot of family issues going on and she didn't feel that it would benefit us or her at this time.
Okay.
And we have Becca in the process, um, just waiting of course more paperwork and then it should be complete, I'm hoping by next week. And I think the process for her is a little bit different than onboarding, just because she's been here before and they would just have to reinstate her with everything, so it might be a very, an easier process than a regular hire.
We did speak with our freshman, Paula, we did speak with Becca about being the second supervisor. Uh, I think she'd be really good in that position, she didn't wanna come in as supervisor, she wanted to come in as dispatcher to go through that process and be, be part of the team and then be the supervisor, which I totally agree with. Um, and she was, she was very adamant about that, which is a good thing. And, but I, I think she could be a very good supervisor, she has a ton of dispatch experience, especially if I can load it all to look like.
Yeah.
She knows how to recruit, and her and Paula can work on that well, so just open both of that about how they felt about that, they felt like they could work all together and get close and help, so I think, I think she'd be a good fit for the second supervisor. And then she's also willing to go and scope for that, it's, it's a requirement that you're able to, you know, fill in shifts, do whatever, she's very much in that, so. So she'd be a huge help as well.
Yeah. So once we bring her onboard, how many positions do we have?
Then we will have one and a half, cause we have that part-time person.
Yeah.
So, we'll have a total of.
Two of six and one part-time?
So what we have, so we should, yeah, we'll have eight total, but we have two part-time included in that FTE.
To be told.
We're getting there.
Yeah. Awesome. Any new applications coming through that you see, you see those, right?
Yeah, those I see, yes.
Alright, and uh any, do you have a timeline on Becca?
If I get back everything next week, I'm hoping to start her about a week.
Alright. Sounds good, anything else?
Um, if Becca starts, we'll just put her through a modified training.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah.
See where she's at, if she remembers her image, that process of remembering and showing her flex, making sure flex is since it would, it's a different cap system than when she left.
Yeah. Awesome, good to hear. Alright, move on to policy stuff. Any updates?
Do you have anything?
I think, it's not really policy, but I'm gonna wedge it in here, cause I feel like it. Um, uh Sam and I over at OEM have been working on kind of the Everbridge site and I can pull it up and kind of show you guys what we've been working on. Uh, we've just been trying to update some of the language on there, um, and then also some of the branding as well. I'm gonna stop talking and do one thing at a time. Doesn't remember how to share a screen, oh, there we go, sorry. It's like something I do all the time, but the moment someone's watching, I can't do it. So yeah, you'll see at the top here, um, we just have a new banner, just more in like county colors with logos, um, just some better pictures up there. Um, before it was just kind of like, it just said Everbridge Alerts or something, it had some like general disaster pictures, so just trying to make it a little bit more like county. Um, we've updated some of the information on here and then also in the program overview, how does, how do emergency alerts work? Links to our Facebook and Instagram page, um, and then we also have kind of an FAQ as well. Um, and also kind of talking about the difference between Everbridge and IPOS. Um, so feel free to take a look at that language, we're definitely open um to feedback on that. Um, but really just trying to, as we move into May, wildfire preparedness month, kind of be able to give a nice fresh look to this system. Um, so feel free, take a look at that, provide any feedback. The other thing we've been playing around with, and I've been talking with Liz and Sammy over in communications as well. Um, if you look at different alerting um systems, they all have like really catchy names, like Eagle County has like EC alerts, um. Uh, some like, so uh Jeffco has lookout alerts based off of Lookout Mountain, some have alliteration, like Alert Aurora. Ours is kind of bulky, cause we just call it Lake County Emergency Alerts. Um, so we've been kind of thinking of looking at the alliteration path. Um, so kind of the forerunner right now is Lookout Lake, if anybody has any thoughts. Um, we can, planning to make really cute stickers, maybe with like a screaming marmot. Um, that's been discussed, apparently there's a marmot down at Community Yield eating the cords down there, if anyone's curious. Um, I didn't even know we had marmots in the city limits, but we do. Um, but that's one thing we've been kind of talking about, um, and then as we move into May, kind of doing like a relaunch of the alerts, encouraging people to sign up, making stickers, um, and then being able to pass them out at community events, get a sticker, Lookout Lake, sign up for emergency alerts. Just kind of wanted to throw that out and get the temperature of this board on how they feel, um. Yeah, just throwing that out there.
I like it, same. We need to capture that, put it in our training plan.
Anyone absolutely hates the idea of a rename too, please feel free to tell me, but just thought.
No, I think it's, it's catchy, it's easy, lines up well. Somebody, somebody's working on some sort of graphic design for this.
Yeah, we've been thinking about doing like the, the yellow man from the seal, like also like yelling. Um, so I, uh, I suggested like a screaming elk, um, and then the marmot came up as well. Um, so if anyone has an idea, we're drawing up some ideas for just like stickers and stuff, um. But we were really just kind of stuck on the name for a while, we didn't wanna do lake alerts because we felt like there's a lot of Lake Counties out there, so we didn't wanna confuse that. So we thought Lookout Lake kept kind of like the emergency feel, the alliteration, that's kind of catchy, it sticks out. So, that's kind of the forerunner right now is Lookout Lake.
Hmm, I like it.
Gets catchy, people will be like, Lookout Lake, what do you mean?
Lookout Lake, look out!
Yeah, good.
So, again, if you hate it, please tell me, but I think Lake County Emergency Alerts is just very cumbersome, it's bulky, it doesn't stick in people's minds. It tells people exactly what it is, um, but I think we can accomplish the same with Lookout Lake and hopefully get some, some branding out there.
Yeah. Cool, anything else?
With policy, I have um policy around park. It's a very good policy, it's everything that we do also, and it's not very wordy or overbearing, and um we're gonna start working on that and um start updating it to fit us, so soon hopefully we will have a policy in dispatch.
And you just pointed out the acronym for that would be LOL.
I appreciate that, Eddie, we will take that acronym.
I wasn't sure how serious you were gonna get with this notification, so.
Yeah, it is.
Just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I did not.
Nice, it's perfect.
Andy, I'm gonna admit, I'm just an idiot and I had lookout as one word in my mind, I did not separate it into two words.
That's fair.
Um, thank you.
Do you think?
I know, I thought you were laughing at having policies in dispatch.
This is, yeah, it's pretty dry to laugh at policies.
I was like, oh wow, Friday brain. Um, did you get those from Maria over in Park? If you did, she spent, I just wanna say that Park County has a really nice dispatch center. Um, I've worked with them in exercises before, Maria's been there for years, so I'm very excited that we got their policies and.
Yeah, and it's what we use, yeah, a lot of it, and I showed it to Daniela and Mary and they were like, yes, can we do this? So, gonna start doing that and get that rolling and.
I have something on policy, um, when I was at the training, that the instructor gave me the policy on CTOs. So I'll, I'll get that over to you.
That would be great.
So it'll be the policy for the actual instructors.
Yes, need that also.
We'll put that in there. Anything else, policy front? No, underway.
I think that's enough.
Alright, we'll uh move on to project management stuff. Um, Paula, what you got for us?
We have um the state link hooked up to dispatch, meaning that we can run plates off of Flex instead of CCIC. CCIC, NCIC, they are linked now, so that's great. Uh, we have that, we just need to tweak it a little bit, get the training, which is training is gonna come not this next week, the following week, all dispatchers will get that training. Um, and then we have, um, why am I drawing a blank? For EMS and fire?
Oh, their system, just, just fire.
Yes. Oh, just fire?
Yeah.
Yeah, just fire.
Your, uh, what is that called, I'm sorry?
It's the image trend.
Image trend, yes. We are almost there with that, we're trying to get the link between, it, it's working.
Yeah.
But we're not sure if fire knows how to access it and what they're looking at.
Right, something about a ten code or something?
Which they are in there, yes.
Ow.
The ten code is the dispel of the call, meaning the end of the call, well, was it clear? Was it report due, anything like that, it's, those are the ten codes. So, they do have them and they are seeing them, so it's just that final touch and that, and making sure that fire knows how to access it and look and see what they're looking at.
Okay.
So a little bit of training on that, so we're almost there on that.
Can I uh have, can I ask Lusky come over and work with you or something?
Almost definitely.
Okay, alright.
Yes.
Cause he's at, he manages our image trend.
Yep.
You may also need image trend to reconnect with whatever your systems do.
Alright, I can't hear you.
You mean need image trend just to reconnect with whatever your systems do, so maybe something on image trends end as well.
Yeah.
Image trend sees it.
Yeah.
They have that, they can see everything on there. The disconnect, I think, a little bit is, is that when they ask me questions, I don't know, cause I don't see what you see on your end.
Right, yeah.
So I think there's a little bit of a disconnect there.
Okay.
So if we can get together so that they can see what we see, I can see what you see, and then we can probably move it together and.
Sounds like easy enough.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're almost there on that, I'm glad.
But thank you for that, cause I know it's been pinging back and forth, yeah.
Yeah. And I spoke with the new GIS today, Shelby.
She started?
Yes, and I'm excited. I showed her what we see on Flex to integrate the GIS into Flex and where that disconnect is happening, so I'm getting her in contact with Flex, GIS and with us so that we have those addresses populating the right way and we're not having to go insert. So, I'm excited about that and getting our GIS up to date with the new Generation nine one one, which is coming out for all PSAPs. There's a lot that is happening with that and just getting everything together to make sure we are in compliance with all of that. Uh, I had a training yesterday for our CGIS, what we use for CBI, FBI, what FBI has brought down. Um, and getting into compliance. We have one section, part one, that we should already be in compliance with, which I believe that we are, I'm just gonna double check with our IT, make sure. And then we have three years to be in compliance with the next steps where if they came in and did an audit on dispatch, they'd be like, you're not in compliance and they're, they could shut us down, they could fine us or do whatever. So, getting that all taken care of, um. I received a email about the tower and it just gave me the license, but it didn't tell me anything else, like is it up and running, is it functional?
The last I heard from OPFC is that they're still waiting on equipment to be delivered. I did not get that email, um, so I can reach out and see where we stand on that.
I can forward you the email, but they did send the, yeah, that it was, we have the license for it and all that. There's a lot of numbers in there, like the frequencies and where it should cover all of uh Lake County, how it's being covered and stuff like that with that tower, so I'll forward that to you. And uh what else, there is a lot still in my head, sorry. Um, well, we went over the hiring and all that. Uh, working with Flex a lot to get Flex to work for us the way we need it to work. So we're having weekly meetings and still trying to figure out how we can get. other people to access Flex, still working on that, um. I think with the new update, we're getting a new update, we're gonna go into twenty five point one, which we will be, which I just found out, we are the first in the state of Colorado to get that update on Flex.
Are we sure we want it? Just gonna put that out there.
It seems like it's even better than what we have right now, and it's easier to maneuver in. Everything that I've been reading, and I know that new updates always come with something, but we have IT involved, we have everyone involved, everything that needs to be done. So, I'm looking at it as a good thing and that anything that can happen, we have those bases covered.
Yeah, I would just really encourage a, a good contingency plan if the update doesn't go well. Like a lot of updates lately, I've been not going well.
So, um, they have tested it quite extensively with other agencies and it's gone well, so I'm hoping because we are new, it should go well because all of our equipment is up to date and stuff, so I am pretty confident, and so are they with likes that it should go well. So, you know, anything can happen, but we're, we have, we're getting our ducks in a row for that date, it's April sixteenth, at four thirty in the morning, when no one's on. So that we, we minimize the impact of it. So, we have ideas already and so that it would be used in the process, just so you guys are aware of that, so.
Well, the one thing I noticed with Flex is, uh, so when I'm entering, let's say, a new person and I have their address, someone who's not in the Flex database yet, and they live in an apartment or a trailer, I'm unable to validate the trailer or apartment number, just the general address, like nineteen twenty one, highway twenty four, something like that.
Are you using a, uh, what are you using, a semicolon, a colon, what are you using?
I'm using the, the pound.
Oh, that's probably why.
Okay.
We can show you if you wanna come in and we can show you.
Will do, yep, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, um, from that, I don't know what we had, if we bought in with Flex, anyone to attend their annual conference? If that's included?
I think we did.
Yeah?
Thought that was part of the contract.
I thought so too.
Yeah, but I also feel like it was in question at one point too, so I had to follow up on that, it's.
The eighteenth is the last day to register for it and it's in Grapevine, Texas.
Yeah. Yeah.
It looks like it, you're very.
Yeah, I think if we did, we only had.
Awesome conference ticket holder.
Maybe two, two positions or something like that, or two, two tickets for it. So, yeah, we'll, let's, let's look into that.
Just because it's April eighteenth and that's kinda close, so I just wanted to throw that out there, if we did have that, uh, you know, I would be willing to go. It looks like a very, very good conference with a lot of information that'll be out there.
Cool, when is it?
It is May twelve, the, the pinky piece, something like that.
Okay.
It's in May, but the last day to register for it is eighteenth and it's eleven, one thousand one hundred and sixty five dollars. From that to the, it's a four day conference.
Okay. The, uh, MCC seventy five hundreds?
Yes, we are still at a standstill with the state to come in and do the transfer of the fiber on it, which I haven't heard of them coming back, but I don't believe that it would be that big of a switch because of what they already installed. And it's all in the contract, we have to rewrite the contract again to show what we want and needed. So that needs to come, come down again, and for you to sign that, someone to sign that contract, I believe it was you, Lester.
Okay, do, what, what do we need to do to push that forward?
I made contact with them and asking them for updates and stuff, and I haven't heard anything yet.
Correct.
So, if anything, I will CC whoever would like to be CC'd on the email, and I, I'm not sure if anyone is.
Okay, I get the Motorola project email, so.
I can't remember, there's quite a few people involved in that, so I'll have to check in, double check and I'll send that out to you guys today.
Okay. When was the last time you tried to contact them?
Last week.
Yeah, I don't have anything from you. Okay, any other projects?
Um, any other projects, no, besides that, the MCC seventy five hundreds, no, that should be closed up, um. And just getting in compliance with everything that we have, and making sure that we're doing what we need to do and we have everything that we need, just working on everything and trying to get it done.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, I'll reach out to OPSC about the tower.
That'd be great, our communication over the the handhelds, all that is not the greatest, and downstairs, it's we have no communication with patrol, when they're downstairs, they're, they're in a blind spot, like, it's, and we're finding those blind spots, but it's not good.
Is that actually with the tower though, or is that actually with the buildings, if it's, they're downstairs?
Both, yeah.
I, I believe it would, it would be, because I remember radios being able to capture whatever traffic.
But we. We talked about next time, communication solutions out to see if they can look into it, there's placing different types of equipment in different locations that within this building, it could help us. You guys have anything at the PDE, I know hospitals like zero.
Right, exactly, analyzing.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's not too bad at the PDE.
Although that's also supposed to ruin the indicators, like in hospitals.
Yeah, yeah, so hopefully, yeah. Okay. Um, I'll add to project stuff, the, uh, construction conversation of this building, uh, we're still going forward with all that. Uh, Monday, we have a meeting set where we're gonna put eyes on the first sketch, uh, when, and so dispatch is a big part of that conversation, uh, went through a good Q and A with the architect and, um, and they showed us like what the different stations would look like for dispatch, it looked really nice, very professional. Uh, bathroom was on the top of the list, make sure we have a bathroom and some sort of like small heating kitchen area for breaks and whatnot, so. They're addressing all that and see what we can fit in there into the total project, so it's, um, going well, uh, if everything continues to go well, we might start construction at the end of this year, or first quarter of next year. And, and so, so far, everything is lining up really well, which is great. With that, we're gonna have to, when we see final directions, we're gonna have to figure out operations, um, during construction. The hope is that we focus on first floor, uh, where my office is currently located, and just do construction there first. Um, and then once we start addressing the second floor, uh, dispatch is gonna be the biggest piece of how we move or how we, uh, keep the dispatch center rolling during the construction phase, so just early heads up on that. Alright, there's nothing else on project management stuff, we'll move on to, uh.
I just thought of something, sorry, so we are paying for a home line at the fire department. It is, uh, phone number seven one nine four eight six one two zero five, where we used to get, you know, we used to revert the calls to the dispatch, I mean, to the fire department, do we still wanna pay for that line? Do we still wanna keep it open?
No, it's, you know, it's our, it's the red phone.
Right.
Over at the station, just in case if dispatch goes down, it's a hard line to go call. I, I haven't heard that thing ringing in like fifteen years.
And we're still paying for it, so I was like.
I think we probably.
Well, it's, even if we had to shut down this dispatch transfer to TFP anyways.
We don't need it.
Right.
That we're not gonna do it to the fire department, so I agree, probably don't need it, it's just gonna make it confusing.
Exactly.
Especially if no one ever, if it never happens and no one ever knows about it, then no one's ever known what's going on, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the, what's the end four digits again, one, five?
One, two, one, two, zero, five.
One, two, zero, five. For sure, that's the.
It is the red phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, when they told me where it was the location, I'm like, I know exactly what you're talking about. So, yeah.
Cool.
Just a different cost that we don't have to.
Yeah, we have contingencies now.
Yeah.
More so, I think just red phone.
I have one thing to projects.
Please.
Sorry, I just thought of it, um, OEM recently received a Starlink, um, from the Homeland Security Grant, uh, before everything got weird in federal funding, uh, this is from the twenty twenty four grant, so we have the Starlink, we also have twelve months worth of service paid for by the grant as well. Um, so we can either turn it on and keep it for twelve months, or we can turn it on, turn it off, turn it on, and the grant will reimburse up to twelve months. Um, I cannot accept the terms and conditions as a Lake County employee without getting legal review. Um, so the Lake County legal team is currently reviewing the Starlink terms and conditions and sending red line edits to Elon. Um, so right now, the Starlink is not technically operational, uh, until I get that legal review, however, I'm not gonna say anything else on recorded line. Um, but just know, we have the Starlink, once we get the okay from legal, I do wanna get with Iron Edge, uh, make sure we can have that as a backup for dispatch as well. Um, and of course, this is a deployable resource through OEM, should anybody need a Starlink, um.
That's awesome.
But yeah.
Our redundancy, that's huge.
Just a little extra redundancy, yeah, I know there were some issues back in twenty twenty three when we tried to hook up the Ray Series of Starlink to you all when we had the outage, um, so wanna get ahead of that and see if we can hook it up to dispatch, but also it's just internet at an instant command post, like if we had a fire and we're in Dexter's Point, um, so just an extra redundancy, um, around that, so just a new asset OEM has, um, once Elon accepts our red line terms and conditions. Uh, but that goes in front of the board on May fifteenth, or no, sorry, April fifteenth, um, or eighteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, um, so I'll have more updates after that, but in the meantime, um, if anybody has any issues and need to start, needs a Starlink or once we get it turned on and start doing some testing and they just wanna play with it, uh, don't hesitate to return.
Cool, let's move ahead.
That would be available to us?
Yes, yeah. It lives with OEM, anybody involved it.
Anything else on project management? Move on to, uh, oversight and supervision, um, we kinda touched on this earlier, the biggest thing is scheduling, um, with, with CTO stuff, and then also I still need to sit down with Paula and come up with our future scheduling project as we hire people, what positions, they're gonna try to get it early, uh, head started to bring in people on, so, um, outside the scheduling, uh, Paula's does amazing at what she's doing right now, keeping us, uh, going from, uh, informing the board, keeping our staff going, covering positions, so still wearing a lot of hats and with that set, please keep an eye on overtime still, just for your own wellbeing. Make sure you're getting your rest time, your time off, so. That's all I have on that front. Uh, thank you for figuring out the schedule for you to be able to take some time off, that's great. And also, uh, we talked a little bit about uniforms, I have not had a chance to talk to you about that, it's in the budget currently right now, I really feel like, uh, you know, it's a, it's a pride thing, so, and I think people really appreciate, um, wearing something within dispatch, so Paula, if you have any budget, I think whoever your department would like, um, do it for it, right? We talked about it, that's what we've been talking about, yeah. I've said, she was talking. Yeah, that's. Anything else you think about here?
Um, I'm off, starting the ninth through the fourteenth, I believe, so Wednesday to a Wednesday, um, next week. And, um, I have, I'm sending out an email to everyone so that they know and make sure that no one's getting any extra time off or anything, I was able to work it out that nobody has to work extra. So, that's a good thing, um, cause I don't want anyone to get burnt out, we have Martha out right now with family issues going on with her family, and actually, um, I am working today. Me and Daniela are splitting up the whole day to give Mary time off, I don't wanna burn out Mary also. And probably tomorrow, I'm gonna have to work also, me and Daniela will split it up also. So, those things arise and I'm sure it'll resolve sooner than later, when Martha comes on and she is trained, that will help a lot. And we won't have to do those things, but for right now, trying not to burn out everybody, and watching myself also.
Yes.
So.
Good.
Good.
Yes.
Cool, anything else that we can do?
Unless you wanna take a shit.
I will burn the place down, yeah. I will launch nuclear weapons, I don't think that's gonna have a chance.
I bet all four of you in there, Jeremiah could be on the video. Straight at it. You can just, you can dispatch the call.
Jokes, yeah.
I got it all for you guys, I could just be like right there, you need to get this, you need to get that, she can keep you guys focused.
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
But no, it's great, and everyone's willing to help and to chip in, and we're taking care of each other, so.
Good, appreciate it. Alright, um, budget, budget stuff, and, uh, we'll start off with, um, some of the, the, uh, red flags Paula found, um, we've kind of narrowed down what the issue was, but, uh, when we were working through the budget process last year, uh, we had, uh, Chelsa entering numbers into Tyler, um, as we were going through our budget process here, and then she left, um, and then we finalized it and we didn't fill in that void of going back into the county system to update the numbers. And so what got it pushed through in the county system were draft numbers essentially. Um, so, we're working with, uh, county finance to make sure that we can get those updated, um, and it may be a little bit of a process to go through with the commissioners, but we've kind of stuck to just saying this is what we approved as the budget we need represented in the, in the, in the county's system. And so, what's the difference, do we have approximate? Yeah, I mean, it was just very much draft mode, so like, uh, for example, some of the line items, uh, weren't updated or their run was put into it. Uh, overtime had, uh, zero, zero dollars in it, it's something we did budget for, and we were happy with what we came up with, uh, but into the management software system, didn't receive those final numbers, uh, so it's not, um, dramatically off, it's not like the personnel total was zero and we budgeted it for, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, so it doesn't, it's not that far off, it's just not in line. And so when we go to code expenses, um, things may look off for a little while, so we, and so that was something Paula found that we had to dive into. On that, so continuing that project, um, I don't think I have anything else set up, Candace, did we set up anything else with Candace?
Not since you met with her, cause I couldn't make that one.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, but I did talk with her, just kind of informally, um, and it does sound like there's a lot of good progress we can make in just how we coordinate with the county, um, she's just working on kind of like audit stuff, um, and like we may not even have to submit differently to DOLA next year. Um, she thinks, but she's, I think she was waiting back on answer from the state on something, which could be.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Uh-huh.
So I think, but, I think we can update our numbers into Tyler, uh, with a couple additional steps and make sure that we're in alignment with the county, um, just keep that all fixed. You have some budget?
I have my budget that I put into, keep track of it, what we have, so, um, I just need to update it, but it's.
And you're going off of what we, it doesn't, as, you know, you're on board.
Mm-hmm, yes, I'm going off of what, yes, what I got, the budget, um, correct, yes, is what I'm going off of. Even though I entered it into Tyler and it says, there's no funds, I'm still entering it, because right like item that that needs to come out of.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. And have you received any requests from the county for a quarterly update? Or disconnected from that, good. Yeah, since we're following county policies, we should probably make sure that we're engaged with that, the budget process throughout the year. If nobody's getting that email for E nine one one, cause you get it for OEM, right, I get it for SO.
Yeah, I.
And it sounds like they don't have a point of contact for E nine one one for those updates. I don't remember getting, cause we just got one. That I don't remember getting, 'cause we just got one, right, for, we did for Q one? Yeah, yeah, I went to, so.
You're talking about the?
Uh.
The memo?
The last memo.
Last memo, yeah.
Yeah, which was early twenty twenty-four.
I'll just call, double check with Liz.
Okay.
See where she wants to send this.
We just don't want that to fall off too far, make sure we're preparing it, now along the budget lines too, preparing for next year, I know we had conversations last year about looking. At uh going above and beyond what the P O C is gonna allow for twenty twenty-four E T C charges. Let's make all partner agencies feel a little better about the total cost and so just throwing that out there as something we wanna keep on our radar. And um start looking into what that process looks like. 'Cause I don't remember. Anything else on budget? Okay, Paula, uh, I wanna open the floor back up for you, if there's anything else that we missed.
Um, with the CCOA, they're keeping track of all of the new house bills coming up. I'm staying up to date on those also, how they're affecting us of what we need or how it will affect us, um. Last steps for some of the house, there's two house bills that we're looking at, the eververage, the language.
Yeah.
And there.
That one got even more confusing.
Yeah, um, and yeah, they're taking out. Words. And rebumping it that way and the last I heard on that is that they took out that we had to. If we have another way of implementing a second language, if we need to, it's whatever we have in place, that it's okay, instead of making it mandatory. The way I understood it.
Yeah, that's what I saw this coming to, I was going through my emails, but I don't know, it's, um. Yeah, it's still really vague and there's still a lot of concern around the vagueness of it.
Mm-hmm. So we're just uh keeping up to date on that, keeping up to date with, um, Lumen is. A thorn in the side, uh, in every PSAP.
Yeah.
Just because they are the only ones that we can go to right now to have. Our PSAP, or all the information running to them, they like have the monopoly in Colorado for that. So, they move at Lumen's speed.
Yeah.
Which is not very quick and uh. Moving forward with that with Lumen, I mean, I'm trying to make progress with them, but it's something that happens with every PSAP in the state of Colorado. So, trying to make. Leaps and bounds with them is sometimes hard. But I figure if I just keep on asking and asking, we'll get better. So, I am looking at that, um, I would like to go to a meeting, great, if you would, it's happening in Canyon City on April twenty-ninth. And, um, it's with Jennifer Kirkland, our P U C. And she set it up for this region. For PSAP supervisors, directors, whatever, and so. It's happening in Canyon City, it's at the twenty-ninth, and I would like to attend that, I think it'd be a very good. Thing to meet other people from other PSAPs in our region, see what they're doing and, you know, what's happening. It's a half-day thing, so.
Yeah, set it up.
Other than that, I don't think that there's anything else, just staying up to date, attending a lot of meetings. So, making sure that we are being compliant and we are. Building, just building that foundation and getting them though. Sure that we're moving on.
Getting done. Move on unless there's any new, any other discussion? Yeah, all right, move on to minutes, reports, and bills, um, first item A is the approval of minutes from uh March seventh, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of approving minutes?
Aye.
Aye. All right, um, any opposed to approving the minutes? I didn't hear aye across the board, so I would ask.
Aye. I think I, I think I just opened my mouth, but nothing came out.
Okay, you have an issue with the minutes, I suppose, no, Jeremiah's like, I did, they're solid, you better approve your own minutes. All right, uh, we'll move on to item B is reimbursement request, the amount of uh one thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-three cents to the Leadville Lake County. Uh, fire rescue for the Nina CTO training. We heard quite a bit from it already, any other questions on the training itself, or do you have anything else to add?
I don't have anything to add.
Well, yeah, actually I do, um, I'm just requesting this because. You know, as we, as um directors of this board, you know, taking on responsibilities, I really feel like it's necess, it was necessary for me to learn about what I am going to lead. And um, I obviously don't have this in my budget, but I also understand that there's um some constraints in the operational budget of, of dispatch, so. If, I'm not really necessarily requesting the full total amount, if that doesn't seem. Um, fair to the actual budget of, of nine one one, but uh if we can, that'd be great. Because I already ob- obviously um spend all of mine to include overdues some years. So, um, I'm requesting that this be invoiced, I don't know what the total budget is for. Um, training for dispatch, do you have that off the top of your head, and I was gonna look it up today, but I can't get on the internet, so.
At the top of my head, I think we did something like four thousand.
It was five.
Five thousand?
I don't know if we did a, did we do a separate line item for travel and like transportation though?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a little bit extra, so we could split it out, so we could do like meals and then, if we wanted to.
And I know that we're gonna send to, to CTO in July.
Yes, and I have the grant for that, a thousand dollars already that we have to cover that portion, and then there was two hundred and some dollars left out of that also.
I mean, I'm, I'm finally doing this one, it seems like it was a very beneficial course, um, I think it needs to be approved beforehand next time though for, for board members. That line was really for training for dispatchers and those kind of courses, if it's gonna be for board members or outside of that, I think it needs to be approved beforehand before we. Before we send it to the course, right?
Sure.
For, for board members especially, so that that can be, that can be worked out prior, where it's coming out of, can we do it? You know, the whole thing, instead of already going through and paying for it and then reimbursing afterwards.
It was like seventy-five hundred bucks for training and education, twenty-five hundred for travel and transportation.
Yeah, I think, um, and I looked up in our bylaws too, so article three point seven compensation says, uh, directors shall not receive compensation for their services, although. Um, the reasonable expense incurred by a director in the performance of official duties may be paid or reimbursed by the authority. Um, so it lines up with our bylaws to, to approve this, um, I'm with Jeremiah, I think earlier conversations on like, hey, I'm gonna go through this course, here's the effect it has on the budget. Presentation of numbers and, and uh, you know, pre-planning with uh the effect that if we do approve this, does it take away from sending somebody through another CTO class? Um, I, 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 so I, I think it, I would be fine with reimbursing this. Um, however, I would like to check our total numbers on how this affects our training budget, our travel budget, and so we're not restricting the dispatchers from going to this potentially. And uh, because it wasn't a specific item that we added to this seventy, seventy-five hundred dollars to say, we're gonna send you through this course, it kind of came up and it seemed like a great opportunity, so. Yeah, um, I'm in, you know, full support of, uh, I think this was a really good thing, I think we pulled a lot of things. And um, I mean, honestly, you're running with this training program, um, and, and so I wanna support those efforts that you're doing for sure. Um, that's just my concern, is making sure that we do have the funding in there, uh, to, to cover this. So, that's my thoughts, right?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You wanna review first though, the reason?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna request a, a review of the, of the, how this affects the bottom line, uh, before that.
I'll send my.
I mean, if you guys want a second that, I'd just, I, I'm gonna go to approve it during this meeting.
No, I think of, of this way to review and then approve it for last month.
Correct, yes, gotcha, yeah. Yeah, I'm offering full support, just wanna see the, how it affects the numbers.
So I'll move to table it to the next meeting?
Yes, I'll second. Okay, yeah, um, any further discussion? Okay. Um, yeah, so, all right, um. So all in favor of tabling this decision to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, are you and I?
Yeah, again, I just kinda opened my mouth, like.
Thank you for the consideration, and yeah, and I, and I appreciate uh that feedback on being able to bring it to the board initially.
Yeah, it sounds like it was a great opportunity to have an upper course itself.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I mean, if we've taken on the responsibility of being engaged, um, like I said before, I need to be informed and we're gonna be able to make informed decisions. Yeah, so. Yeah, and we're learning as we go, so it's, uh, you know, I, I don't disagree with the decision to go, I think it's just the process, we can really, we can learn from it, we learn about these things in the future. And this is like if we end up sending somebody from the board to go to the conference, now we kind of have an earlier insight into, uh, to hear that, so, yeah, I appreciate you doing that, that's great. All right, we. Good, yeah, all right, well, uh, adjourn the meeting, uh, next meeting is, uh, May second, twenty twenty-five at ten AM.
Andy, you have anything for us?
No, yeah, Andy, you got anything before we officially close out?
Hey, no, I do not, thank you.
Okay, we'll adjourn at uh eleven twenty-two.
Thanks, Andy, thanks, Daniela.